Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. The time is now 6:05. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and/or video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio-recording or live-video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call, Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malik?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gyllenhaals?
Here.
City Manager Vahl?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
And Deputy City Manager Lou Belasco is also present. Any additions or deletions, Council?
Any additions or deletions, Council?
Nope.
No? Okay, with that, we have a special guest with us this evening. Has served Cape May County for 47 years? Forty-six or 47? I'm trying to, I'm pulling for one more is what I'm trying to do. But if I could join you at the podium here, Jerry. Most of you know Commissioner Director Jerry Thornton, and it's quite an honor to present you with a key to the city.
Oh, isn't that nice?
And I know you're going to dinner after this, so if you put this on your dashboard, it also acts as a parking pass.
(laughing)
Okay. But I did want to just say a few words. Commissioner Thornton, Director Thornton, has been serving the County of Cape May, as many of you know, for 46 years. Lifetime of dedication to service to Cape May County, and of course, the City of Cape May, and a variety of different projects and important things for the city. And Jerry has been just a great leader and a shining example, has crossed party lines to work with all of the different residents, different people in the county, and really is an example of the type of politicians that we need, not just here in Cape May County, but in the country. So Jerry, I appreciate your major service to the city, and thank you very much for the many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I can tell you, it's difficult for me, and I will say, my wife knows when I get this recognition, because this 46 years for me has been wonderful, and I mean that. I've been so honored to have served. Michael and I go back a long, long way. And yes, the political part of it has been difficult sometimes, as Michael know, but I will tell you my philosophy about politics. Mike and I go back 40, all 46 years. And I've always said the same thing. Come September and October, I'm going to beat the hell out of you, but the day after election, we're going to go to the Bellevue and have a beer. And that's the way it should work. That's important, because we have to work together. But I've been so honored to work with Cape May and the officials of Cape May, both past and present, and now you, Mayor. I can tell you, we've had outfall pipes, we've had beach erosion, we've had Madison Avenue. I can remember all those things with traffic and everything else. Hurricanes have been sometimes really difficult, and for all these years, as many of you know, I've had emergency management. But I'm going to say one thing. Any recognition that I get, I want to make sure that you recognize the staff in the County of Cape May, and I mean that sincerely. Because very often, all of us, they make us look good, and they do, by their dedication and their hard work. And I've been very, very honored to serve this county and serve its residents, and to be elected 13 times, which has been wonderful, I can tell you. But again, it's been a privilege, and it's a privilege that you all have given me, that I have been very, very proud of, and I mean that sincerely. And again, the City of Cape May has been outstanding in the things that you have done. And I can remember, I'm going to say, hurricanes very often were the most difficult when we all worked together. I remember when we evacuated Cape May, Michael knows and everything. One time, we had to evacuate all the nursing homes in the County of Cape May. We evacuated 1,600 senior citizens without one injury. And you know what that says? That says the staff and the emergency management people and the ambulance corps, they did it. All I was, the guy in the lead, saying, okay, we've got to get this done. But I can tell you, I'm very, very proud to have served all of you and to have served the County of Cape May and the City of Cape May. So Mayor, thank you very much for this honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
And just quickly too, two of the projects, just in the last maybe two or three years, that Director Thornton really pushed and helped with was, of course, the Franklin Street School project, and that was in a partnership with the county and the county library. And we reached out to him for the Harriet Tubman Museum, and he did everything he possibly could. So, and that's just the last two years of your 46 years. So, thank you, thank you very, very much again. And you can be excused to go have a wonderful dinner, hopefully, in town. (laughing) Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
We're going to go to dinner in Cape May.
There you go. And you have your parking pass, so, okay.
All right. Mayor, next up, we do have a presentation on the New Jersey Safe Passing Law.
That's great. Paul, are you with us this evening? Thank you, sir.
On the bicycle and pedestrian advisory?
Come, any of the bicycle pedestrian, come on up if you'd like to join us.
You know what?
I wanted to introduce Paul Mikewitz with the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition. He's been a-
Dr.?
He's been a great resource for the Bike and Walk Advisory Committee, as well as now the Police Department, and hopefully help us make Cape May a safer city for everyone.
That's great.
Paul, I misspoke. I think they have the video of that's, if you want to do that before you're speaking, there's, it's your call.
Sure. That would be great. If you could, Aaron, is that Aaron?
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to meet you in person. If you give me just a moment, I'll bring it up. And if you want to go into presentation mode as well.
So this is a short video, and you'll also find this on the, posted through Facebook on the Police Department's Facebook page, along with some other great stuff. It's a very short video about the new safe passing law.
Ask that, Paul?
Yes.
Passing a person riding a bicycle on the road can be tricky, especially when the riders are children or inexperienced. Drivers will be unsure of what to do. People who ride bicycles have a legal right to ride with traffic on the roads. Here are some guidelines to follow to help keep everyone safe. Slow down. Passing a person riding a bicycle when driving at high speeds gives you less time to react to any unexpected conditions. Only pass when it's safe. Wait until you're on a straight, clear stretch of road. And never pass when turning or at a curve in the road, or if there are oncoming vehicles. Give some room. Do not pass too closely to a person on the bicycle. There should be at least four to five feet or half a roadway width between your vehicle and the person riding a bike. The bicyclist might have to avoid hazards on the road, such as potholes or broken glass, so leave as much room as possible. Be patient. If you cannot safely pass a person riding a bicycle by allowing enough space, then wait. Stay behind the bicyclist until you can pass safely. It may take a few more seconds, but it will ensure that you and the bicyclist can arrive at your destinations safely. Do not honk or yell. Harassing and distracting bicyclists, such as honking or yelling at them, could startle and lead them to wobble or fall, potentially causing harm to the bicyclist and driver. People who ride bicycles include your mom, your grandfather, your sister, your uncle, your coworker, your neighbor, friend, and even your child. They deserve to be safe and respected like everyone else. Remember to slow down, only pass when it's safe, allow enough room to pass, be patient, and do not honk or yell. For more information, visit the New Jersey Safe Roots Resource Center at safetruthsj.org.
Great, thank you.
Hey, if you, Paul, if you wouldn't mind the interruption. I interrupted Jeff when he was introducing you, and I, look, the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee have done a whole lot of work. Great job. I know Jeff has spent a good bit of time with you, and just wanted to give him the chance to reintroduce you and recognize you for what you've been doing for, so. If you'd, if you could turn on the mic there, Jeff. Perfect. Thank you, Doctor.
I just, it's my pleasure as a, as a member of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee to introduce Paul Mikewitz of the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition. He's an educator for that organization, and so he's got so many resources that can help Cape May be a safer city for everyone. Thank you.
And he's driven so very far to do this. Thank you, Paul.
And well, and thank the Council, thank the Advisory Committee for giving me the time here to talk about this. So, I'm, my new role with the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition is to provide education and also to help spread the word on the New Jersey Safe Passing Law. And I want to start off with why it's really important. So, I transitioned from a 40-year career with the YMCA, working with health and fitness. For 40 years, chronic illness has just skyrocketed. We saw it coming a mile away, and it has just gotten worse and worse over these last 40 years. Over the last 40 years, we've seen a big decrease in people biking and walking around short distances. We've seen a big increase in fitness opportunities, but our fitness has actually gone way down. Only two out of 10 Americans get even the minimal level of recommended exercise. So I try to frame this as not a nice thing, but a necessary community health issue, to be able to help make it the healthy choice, the easy choice to get around town. You have a beautiful town here, a beautiful community, and so many locations that people can get around by bike and walk if they feel safe doing that. So that's, that's why I'm doing the work. And this law is one way to help give the law enforcement community another tool to help keep our roadways safe, similar to these move-over law and the stop-and-stay-stop law to help protect pedestrians, move-over law for emergency responders on the side of the road. It's just common sense. What we're looking for is to slow down, move over if there's a lane available, and to pass with at least four feet to spare. You know, there's a lot of research that's been done around crash fatalities, and we know that speeds are a major complicator of all of that. And if we could just slow people down, we'll all get around and get to where we want to go safely and reduce the risks. And one of the things that we have to do to change our behavior, I like to refer to as the five E's. So, first E is engineering. So some of the things that you've already been doing, some of the easier things with paint, signage, you know, sharrows, signs, easier to implement. And then you ramp things up a little bit to other infrastructure changes of engineering, like speed bumps, speed platforms, elevated crosswalks, bump outs. I've seen all those things in my short time here to help change the behavior of motorists to slow down. When we can do that, we know we make it safer. Big, wide-open roadways just invite high speeds, and we have a lot of hurry-up and wait, where motorists will rush. It's almost like we have to be accelerating all the time, or we're frustrated. So changing the roadways, infrastructure, engineering makes a big difference, and we have a lot of needs that you have to balance for all the users out there. So engineering's a big one. Enforcement-
Paul, if you'd like me to move forward with the PowerPoint, please just let me know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I wasn't even going to be using this power. It was just a video. It was just a video, but, but-
We'll leave it up then.
Yeah, leave it up there. Looks good. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So when it comes to enforcement, that's an important piece. So, we have this new law, and we are going to be working together with the Bike and Ped Advisory Committee and the Police Department to put together a community forum for people to join us online and listen to what the law is all about, to really help spread the, spread the word and why it's important. Again, it's important that people see this as a necessary item and not just nice, when they see people out on bikes. So it's a law that went into effect March 1st. A lot of people don't know about it. We are just getting the word out through social media primarily, and we are going to be getting some print materials available as well. And it's a marathon, so we know we have to do more in the way of billboards and bus wraps and things like that, that people can see. Thank you. So when it comes to the enforcement, it's a very important piece, and we want cooperation, and that's for all users, not just motorists. We don't put it all on the motorists. One of the things that I'll be doing is education. That's the next E. Education with providing on-the-bike training, smart cycling. We have a great classroom that is done online through Cycling Savvy with some great videos that are very compelling to help train people, some very counterintuitive strategies how to stay safe in the road. So we'll be doing that, I do that on Wednesday nights, and that's available to anybody, because it's online. And then we'll be organizing an actually smart cycling class, which involves a on-the-bike component in the parking lot, doing skill-building drills, and then we take the skill-building drills and the classroom work, and we take it out on the road, and we allow people to experience these different strategies and techniques and how that changes the behavior of motorists around them. So a lot of the strategies that we employ are geared towards, you know, obviously controlling and doing, following road law, but as well influencing how motorists see us. So we want everyone to know, remember to be visible, be predictable, and be courteous. And that courtesy is like the secret sauce to, I think, managing all the different road users. And that's something we emphasize in our training.
Bless you.
The safe passing law is part of that courtesy, just not buzzing past somebody, at the same time being aware of who's behind you, seeing them back there, moving over, letting them get by, making it easier so we're cooperating. That's an important piece of this as well. So we'll have some, we'll have a community forum, we'll have on-the-bike training coming up, and other things that I've seen. The third E is encouragement. Fourth E, encouragement, where you're doing some fun things, like it's cool to wear a helmet campaign, and reinforcing good behavior, special events that get people, kind of reinforce walking or riding to school. So there's the International Walk or Ride Your School, Bike to School Day, and that gets people over the tipping point of a behavior they might never have done before. And they do that with their kids, and they say, oh, you know what? That wasn't so bad. That was kind of fun. We should do this more often and avoid some of the stress. So encouragement is also important. It could be a special event, could be challenges, fitness challenges, lots of things you can do there. And then the last E is evaluation, and of course, just seeing how all these things are working. You know, speed audits to see, has it changed the behavior of motorists? Are we seeing better behavior on, you know, among cyclists? And I learned that you have a new, a new component that is golf carts. I haven't had to deal with that with my bike training, and we're all familiar with electric bikes, and that's just turbocharge craziness. Electric bikes can be a great part of the solution to micro-mobility and getting around town, but we all need to cooperate. So that is also part of the training, and we would welcome any people with electric bikes. And the last E that I like to add is the equity E. Micro-mobility, getting around town, if we can do that, that makes it available to everybody. You don't have to have and manage, you know, a motor vehicle, and you don't have to use it all the time. So it's, we know it's better for the environment. It creates a much more chill atmosphere when you don't have cars buzzing all over the place, less of a chilling effect. And I could guarantee you that there's so many people that want to ride their bike to get to different places, but they don't feel safe doing it. I hear that all the time. And if they can get some education, and you can make the changes and keep moving in the direction you're doing here in Cape May with infrastructure changes and enforcing, letting people know about the law, everyone can coexist and, and stay safe. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes, and again, we'll follow up with the community forum and, and education workshop. Any questions?
No, but that's a wealth of knowledge, and we really appreciate you driving down and working with our bicycle committee, our citizens and our police. It's wonderful, Paul. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may add real quick, first and foremost, I want to actually thank the Bike Safety Committee and the Pedestrian Committee. They approached me several weeks ago, and we've been in dialogue for a few weeks. They introduced me to Paul, and basically reenlightened what we had started last year with our Bike Safety Helmet Committee, Helmet Program. It's cool to wear a helmet. We've had several conversations on this floor about bump outs and what we're supposed to do and what the engineers tell us. What I would like, if we could, when we have those conversations, maybe invite you to the conversation and be a part of that, because I think what he's seeing is in different facets around, just not Cape May, everywhere else where he lives. And he's more of the, I would say, expert. We're always looking for that expert up here, you know what I mean? So that's an expert that we should hone in when we're doing these type of things. I'm not sure of the cost, but, but the programs he's spoken to me about are very enlightening, and I think one of the programs was obviously the videos and the group. But I think we'd like to come up with something for our kids in our classrooms for both West Cape May and Cape May Elementary, because that's a, that's a huge volume for us. If we can maybe gear one of these programs towards a little small piece in the beginning of the school year, middle of the school year, and the end of the school year, but when they're all about to get out on the street and ride their bikes, we can push that program out there and then encourage the parents to become involved and with our Bike Safety videos and things like that. So I appreciate that, and we're going to move forward. He sent me all of the links. Dr. Vasir as well has been, you know, on me every other day, saying we need to push these links out, we need to push them out. So we're putting that out on Facebook and our social media, but we need to do more and, and be a partner with them. So we're doing a phenomenal job, and thank you very much for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, and also just compliment, I know the positive ticket program, most of the people in this room know it, but maybe some at home don't. We are enforcing the positive ticket program now, where the police officers will give out a ticket to the young children who are wearing a helmet. a ticket to the young children who are wearing a helmet, and that ticket will be for ice cream or pizza. So any parents listening, make sure your kids are wearing your helmet and they get, even get rewarded for it. So thank you very much. Anything further to add?
No, I don't think so. But I'm just, again, wanted to always recognize the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. They're doing a great job. And, you know, we have a couple more members here tonight. We have Hillary Pritchard, and we have Jim Moffett. Jim has been instrumental, is great. He's worked with the Cape May, I'm sorry, with Exit Zero, and Exit Zero has agreed to run some ads for us at no cost.
That's awesome.
This week, yes.
That's awesome.
It's fantab, I mean, it's a great, great start. These folks are doing excellent work, and I just want to congratulate them. Thank you.
Great. And just not safety, but we did walk some of the Cape May. We went over some of the crosswalks and things like that. Today, 12 more bike racks were added, which is great. It's a good start. As you may know, of course, we got them up in front of Convention Hall, but I saw Public Works were actually out there again today installing a few more, and those are 12 additional, you know, hadn't been there in the past. So that, they're, they're getting back at it now. I think they got a couple other things going this spring, but they're getting back at it, and we had a conversation. I believe they also are.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, they, they add seven additional bike racks around the mall and Rotary Park area. So you'll see them. They've just been put in.
That's great.
And there will be more to follow on the sharrows next meeting.
The shooting.
Next meeting.
Yep. Working on it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any updates from City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, I'll try to be brief. We had a scoping meeting, talking about crosswalks, the lines, we're trying to get that implemented, probably to do it in four different phases of the town, four different areas at a time, get all the crosswalks and lines done. The AME progress meeting, I understand, Mayor, you found something interesting, or they found something interesting. I want to thank you and Lou for all the work going on there. The Firehouse, ladies and gentlemen, and council, if you want to look at it, just really coming together now. I was walking through there today, and some of it, it's really shaping up. They put the rooms, interior rooms, they're working on that stuff. It really looks pretty cool. We, we swore in, and the mayor was there with me, four new police officers. I want to thank you for the support for the two police officers that retired and that were replaced, and two ones that you approved in the budget. So we're still working on it. We have two more to go to fulfill our obligation as far as the squads. The lifeguards, excuse me, well, we talked about a vertical pump, and through the grace of God, it's going to work. They're starting, they're planning that process to get that thing going. They're looking at Monday or Tuesday to actually put the vertical pump in so that we secure our water supply and we don't run short with the holiday coming up. Lifeguards, I met with Harry today, just to give you an update. We got, we currently guarding 16 beaches with 36 to 40 guards per day. We're still short about 10 full-time. We've had people coming in tonight. I'm asking council to support the starting wage from $13 an hour, $15 an hour. That will be a help, and it's a help to hopefully get this beach as safe as we can. As of the date, we, they've performed 12 water rescues, 14 first aid calls with requiring the assistance of the Cape May Fire Department. OEM, Matt, the chief, the fire, the deputy fire chief, Eric, and Colin, to get prepared for hurricane season. We're in there already. God forbid we have a hurricane. We're doing our best to get prepared, put the evacuation route signs up, putting that all together, and Eric's doing a good job. Bob Church, we mentioned earlier, he's going to be meeting with us on Thursday, but he's been so helpful for everything we've asked for in the city. The commissioners, Thornton was here tonight, the chairman, the retiring chairman, but they did a resolution, the county, council, county commissioners authorizing us for our electric vehicle parking, light vehicle parking by Convention Hall. Promenade, we're looking into an application to put over the promenade widening the asphalt there. People complained about it's hot, and looking at an application. We're going to get a sample to look at to put on the asphalt at Public Works to see if it'll come out at the end of the day with a gray to reflect the heat off of that asphalt. So right now, it's in an experimental stage. We'll be reporting to council how that goes. The, congratulations to Lou and the council. AME Church, you got a $150,000, $156,000 grant for the bell tower, which is really cool. That's coming together real nice. Friday, the four-way stops will be in for the Broadway and Elmira. That'll be a four-way stop. The reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue, we had four bids, and the low bid committed, well, the bid committed $835,000 and change. We're looking into the bills, and I know the deputy mayor, she's concerned with that because I was talking about it earlier today. When I assign these bills, we got so many different phone bills. We got Verizon, we got this one and that one. So we're trying to get a study done to shake it down to, you know, years ago when I was involved, we, we had just one vendor that did the phones, did everything. Now we got, we got all these different vendors, and I question when I look at these bills a lot, you know, are we really, are they all working number one, all these phones? Anyway, we're looking into it for the internet, the phones, all that kind of service. And I think that's about the highlights. Yes, that's it, Mayor, council.
Thank you.
We're all ready for the Fourth of July.
Oh, good.
And recreation, getting ready for the parade and all that good stuff.
That's great. Yep. City Solicitor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, good.
Mayor, next up, we have some mercantile license late fee reimbursement requests, if you'd like to move forward with that unless council wishes to discuss anything prior to those.
We, we received a couple requests for fee, late fee reimbursement, and I, I did talk to a couple council members. I know some of them thought were a little excessive. $500 a month is a lot of money, but the Solicitor did prepare something that may be a little bit of a solution as we discuss this.
And some of these requests that come through, I think I'll point out that we did enact that new ordinance last year, or this year, rather, it was effective January 1, 2022. It's a new ordinance, but it's an old process in large part, fire inspection and mercantile licensing, and those two have to work together. People have to pay a fee on time. The date didn't change, May 1st. It's always been May 1st. What did change is we, we enacted that, or council enacted that equitable fee schedule based on square footage. And then there's also a late fee in there, and the late fee in the general mercantile license provisions is 10% of the applicable fee, and that's applicable to every other license. In this new ordinance or this amended ordinance, it's basically the fee multiplied by each month that a person's late. So instead of 10% for every 30-day period, it becomes 100%. The goal, I think, in having that in there was not just to be entirely punitive. I mean, we do have a separate violation provision in our general penalty provision in, in the beginning general code section. So that's something that's in there, and that's not something that's enforced here. But that late fee goal is to get people's attention, get people to pay on, on time, and then make sure that the city has adequate enforcement mechanisms when, when the code's not being complied with. In light of some of the requests, council may consider reverting, not, this isn't a new formula, the 10% is already in the code bucket and is what was the measure of the late fees previously before we changed it. So council could consider reverting back to the 10%, which is found in our code book right now, and you would still maintain the ability to enforce this code. There's, you have the general penalty provisions that apply to any violation of the code. We have code enforcement officers. I know that the City Manager's Office has been working on the issue of enforcement. So I'm satisfied from a legal perspective that if you were to adjust this code to the 10%, there's other ways to enforce the code as there always has been. So I just, in, in light of the requests here tonight and the important business that council has to do, and in light of the concerns, I think that is a potential option, that it balances both the need to have a late fee, really to, to keep paying these on time, but also recognizing that maybe it doesn't have to be at the level that it is right now, and you have other ways to enforce it.
I just want to bring up, the reason for the late fee came from the offices that are trying to make everybody compliant, right? A lot of the issues they have are the fact that they have to keep chasing certain people down all summer long to pay their mercantile fee for their rental. So I think that's where the fee, you know, they wanted some more teeth in it because they, they kept, a lot of their days are spent trying to get people to pay for their fees, and that was the reason why we put that amount in there to have some more teeth, because people were like, hey, I'll just wait till the end of summer and then pay it. And we have to remember, the whole idea of having mercantile license is to make sure things are inspected and that it's safe. And that's the whole goal here, is to have some compliance of fire inspection so that the places are safe when people go to rent them. And if people aren't getting mercantile license, then they're not getting inspected, and then we could have some issues there with safety.
And, and like you said, Deputy Mayor, it's the city, we, it's not like, I don't think the manager's office budgeted for late fees. The, the late fees, we care about safety, and that's the goal of that, that ordinance is to capture your attention and make sure that there's a fire inspection before May 1st, before the season starts and people are in there. So that's the goal. That's not a, it's not a money generator.
No.
I mean, it, it is, catches your attention when you have to pay it, but that's the point, is to, to make sure that it's now paid on time.
Right. Because I think when we were discussing this last year, what, what came up was a fact on how much time was spent up in the clerk's office chasing people down to pay their mercantile fees, and that shouldn't be, their whole job shouldn't be chasing people down to pay the fees. And that's why there was a fine put in there, so that people realize that, you know, the fine comes in. You know, I think the people here, they're coming for, aren't the ones that were, the ones they were always tracking down. I think they kind of got caught up in that whole trying to make everybody compliant.
Can I also add?
Please.
Plus, I think some of the complications with the mercantile licenses this year was that new SDL software when we converted over from our previous program to this new program. I know when I received my mercantile information in the mail, there were some errors in it, and I had to go back and, you know, correct some of those things. So I, I think, and I understand what you're saying, Deputy Mayor, but I also think that there, you know, needs to be a balance. You know, we take a look at, yeah, this is not, you know, the clerk's office or, you know, to, to go and really, you know, search and find, you know, and make all these phone calls to find out who's, who, you know, who hasn't paid. But I, there, there has to be some sort of a balance, I think. And I, I think it was, you know, when we, when we originally passed it, I think it was, I, I don't think it was really the intent to have it as a, a budget, you know, generator.
No.
Not the critical.
No, but it was more, it was more of like a deterrent to make sure that you get in and pay your, pay your mercantile license.
So Solicitor, is there other provisions that would allow us to withdraw the license within 30 days if not paid, or 60 days at most if not paid? Or was that something that we would have to put in?
It's more like you have to register on time. If you're operating without a license, that can become a potential enforcement issue for the code enforcement. So, and, you know, the, there is a sort of a practice, and I think that the renewals go out on an annual basis, and I think in, in what I've seen, I think that some, the applicants that are here tonight, I think a lot of them have faithfully paid over the years, so that's not really an issue. But I'll just point out that the, I think it's important to note that renewals are a courtesy, but it's, it's not really up to the city to point out when the bill needs to be paid or remind you, you know, that it's May, it's May 1st, it always has been May 1st, and other plans are made, and the city being one of the people on the list to make sure that your rental unit is ready for the season is, is an important thing. And it's, it's not for, we need the $50 or whatever it is. It's because we want these places to be safe and inspected. That's why this process is built in. And the fees have to cover the administration of that process, which requires inspection, requires staff. So, but I wanted to point that out, that, you know, the renewals go out, but if it's getting to the end of the month and you don't have a renewal, it's really up to the individual property owner to reach out to the city and, hey, I haven't got my form, I need to get this set up. So I wanted to point that out. And, and look, I'll point out too, we, we built in, the reason this is in front of council tonight, and we put it on the agenda is because it's in the code. We had a, a late fee that I think warranted if, if it got to a certain level that council would have the ability to, to pull the reins in on it, as it should. But good cause, you know, I'll give you an example, the IRS, you know, the big bad IRS waives fees sometimes too, but it's, it is based on, you know, what they consider to be good cause, things like fire, casualty, natural disaster, death in the family, or other circumstances that like, that are like that. So there are circumstances that council could consider doing that, but I think if you're, if you're going to do anything with these, I think it makes a lot of sense to, to take a unified approach and recognize that you have other ways to enforce this. If you, if you think that you want to make, adjust these, I think it makes sense to take a uniform approach so that it's fair across the board to everybody. But that's, that's one way of handling it, and that's why that was prepared, just to give council the option of addressing it in that manner.
How does council feel about going back to 10%?
Well, I'm, you know, again, I'm okay with 10%, but there has to be.
Enforcement.
Yes. The clerk can't be chasing after, after everybody.
Right.
And so there has to be, I think, a provision that basically says that, look, you, you didn't pay it, and again, within 30 days or 45 days, if it's not paid, your license is no longer valid, and you cannot use, you cannot rent out your facility, your, your property. There has to be some enforcement there so that they're not chasing after it. Code enforcement's going to have to go out and say, you're done until you pay your bill, but.
And that's, that's really where code enforcement can step in, and I'll point out that the, the penalties for operating without a license can get much more steep than this late fee, because every day that you don't have a license and you operate could be a separate violation, and the penalty in the code could be $1,000 a day, not $1,000 a month. So that, I'll point that out on the record in public. That is already in the code whether you change this or not, and the people that are getting these licenses need to know that, because I think, I actually see that as a bigger hammer than this late fee provision. But, you know, when people are coming in, you know, maybe a few weeks late or something like that, it's, they're not getting cited, they're just paying a late fee to the clerk's office to get a late mercantile license, so.
But I think if it's always been in the code, that there could be fines for not having a license. The problem was, they weren't doing it, and that's why they wanted the fines, because they wanted more of a teeth than to go to court and every, and have it done that way.
And the teeth just come in a different way now. It can come through code enforcement, you know, knocking on a door, sending a letter, reaching out to whoever's associated with the property and say, you know, see that you're renting but not licensed, and we need to get that sorted out. So that, that's, that's my point in couching this. If you do make this change, you know, we, we still will be looking, relying on code enforcement to enforce the code like any other provision.
Can I ask a question? Councilmember Jaeger just mentioned 45 days. Do, is that something we could put in the code as an amendment?
Well, if they don't, let me put it this way. You, you need, mercantile licenses aren't forever. You need to renew them every year. So like, if you don't come in and pay, it's not revoked, you just don't have one. So we, if you're, if you are renting, you need to be licensed on an annual basis. So if somebody is, hasn't paid yet or hasn't registered for the year, then they could potentially be operating without a license, which could then be cited under the code.
Council, may I add to that?
But we should, shouldn't we inform the people that were, code's coming in 45 days? I mean, and what we're saying is that if they don't pay on time, code enforcement could be there one day later and say, you're, you're.
They could send them a letter the following day and say, and that letter or, you know, contact can be made and say, look, I, I know that you're gearing up for the season, but we need you to come into compliance.
Because I think what Councilman Jaeger's basically trying to do is take away the financial penalties to some point, but still have code enforcement with the teeth necessary to penalties to some point, but still have code enforcement with the teeth necessary to enforce the code.
And giving some flexibility, understanding there's reasons why people don't, you know, they're not just avoiding it in most cases. We know in one situation, it's, you know, there's no way it was intentional, but in any case.
But I think that comes down to is, we've always had that ability for code enforcement to enforce this, correct?
Correct.
So we've always had it.
Yeah.
And they still were having issues with people. It wasn't like, we're just putting it now, that code enforcement can do this.
No, and I think people were paying late fees before, too, weren't, you know, like, that's the thing.
Yes. Would you mind if I add some input, please? So yes, I actually, I ran a report prior to the council meeting just to kind of see where we stood in regards to previous years as far as late fees go. And no matter what you do, you're gonna have people who are late every year, who may have never been late before, they might be reoccurring. Most people just say, I plain old forgot, or I didn't get them, and there's a late fee. So it's ranged from 142 late fees in 2018, 137 in 2019, 181 in 2020, and that is even when council postponed it a month, 121 in '21, and we're up to 70 this year. So the problem of the issue of individuals being late is not going to go away. We're trying, but to be realistic, people will be late. As far as the teeth and code enforcement goes, I do think that's something that we can also help with internally in our office. I think in the past, we have been a little too cooperative to individuals who are late in trying to reach out to them multiple times before we get code enforcement involved, because we didn't want to have to send code enforcement out there. If it's something that we could have, we could get them in and just like, listen, you're two months late, come in. We've sent emails, we've sent a certifi, or like, you know, reminder letters, sometimes two. I think we've been a little lenient in our office before getting code enforcement involved because we didn't want it to get to that point. But honestly, we've run out of time and energy, and if it comes down to getting code enforcement involved right away, then we absolutely can do that. And I think we will moving forward. But on the other hand, we get such an influx of mercantile licenses this time of year that it takes us time to input everything and execute the licenses. So I'm almost hesitant to put a certain timeframe on it, just because I'm not sure how long it would take my office to go through over 1,600 mercantiles at this point, where I think we're at like 1,650, which is a lot. So it might take us two months to go through all of them, and even get to the point where we're creating a list to provide to code enforcement. But I do think that we can definitely condense the process in going to code enforcement sooner than we have in the past.
What do you think this SDL software will be helping you with this whole process moving forward?
I think, I think it'll be much smoother next year. I do think there was, there were a lot of balls in the air being juggled at the same time this year for mercantile licenses. I am very hopeful that, if not next year, in the very near future, we will be going to electronic renewals, which is why we're asking for everyone's email addresses, so at least we could send electronic renewal notices. So I think it's gonna be smoother moving forward. But you're always gonna have people saying, oh, it's the wrong email address, oh, I changed my account, I didn't get it, you know, so it's never gonna go away. But I am hoping it'll be smoother in the future.
Okay.
I think Lou, Lou may have had something to add there.
Well, as of today, code enforcement was given a look screen onto the SDL. There's no need for them to enter any sort of information, so as it's entered into the program from the clerk's office, they will be updated and have a running list as to who's paid and hasn't paid. So it should, this software will help in that kind of enforcement.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we have kind of the question here of if we want to go back to the 10% fees as an amendment to the ordinance, and that would, what do you think?
I'm in agreement to that, but I also, I mean, and again, this is the rollout of that SDL software, thinking that maybe we might want to change that again next year, just because it, you know, it does create a problem for the clerk's office, understanding that, you know, that we had a little glitch this year, you know, revisit it again next year. That's my thought.
Okay. So, and I agree with that. I think we revisit it next year and see if we do do this 10% amendment, if that's enough, if that is, you know, and if code enforcement does enforce, you know, moving forward, which I think you're hearing from council, that's what we want to see.
I'll point out...
The only thing, the only thing is, I see the resolution to maybe go with this. The only thing that I have an issue with in this resolution is in C, and it's taken out, the city shall not refund any inspection, registration, or late fee paid pursuant to this chapter unless approved by a resolution by city council and show good cause. I think that should stay in there, and the reason is, as a councilperson, I approve for these sent refunds on the meters. I think we should be approving the late fees and taking it away from the city manager. It should be, I think, a council's decision for the late fees. That's the only thing that I see.
I don't, if you, the removal of that is more to recognize that it's less likely that you're gonna have people coming in here for a $50 late fee. They'll just pay it. 500 or, you know, a month, you might see more applications, but taking that out would not put that within the discretion of the city manager's office. It would still have to be approved by council, in my opinion, Deputy Mayor, because, like, the clerk's office, as much as I think some would like to make that request to the clerk's office, they just look at the code and they don't have the authority to do it unless somebody, you know, the five of you would say that that's okay.
Right.
And that's kind of built into that. Even if you get rid of that, if somebody were to say, you know, I don't think this $50 is fair, or my house burnt down, or whatever it is, that doesn't prevent somebody from writing a letter and asking for an accommodation. We, I mean, council would consider that, you know, just like the IRS would, even if it's not written in there.
I just think it makes it clear on what people's, what the process has to be if there is a late fee. And that's why I think it just makes it clear. So there's no like, oh, well, can he just approve it? Oh, he thought he could approve it, and he approved it, and he didn't realize it. And I think that just makes it clear on who approves the refunds.
Okay.
Yeah.
So to remove the strikeout, Deputy Mayor, would you make a motion to leave that last sentence in there, which would leave it to council to decide on good cause whether there's gonna be a refund issued?
But otherwise, it returns at the 10% fees.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So do we make a motion, because we haven't really introduced this?
Well, you can make a motion, and then motion to introduce as amended, too.
Do we have to, excuse me, make a motion to add it to the agenda, or?
Yeah, it hasn't even been added yet.
Yeah, make a motion to add resolution or ordinance 472-2022.
I'll second that motion.
Wait, I was gonna put in...
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, go ahead.
To add the 10%, which is in here, but to take, to also keep in what is striked out. Is that all right, or how you want to?
Yeah, you can just remove the strike through, and so the only change would be, you'd be adding 10% in there.
Everyone understand that?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second.
Can I ask a quick question? Since this is an ordinance, how do we make this effective immediately?
Well, it's, I don't think, to be honest with you, I think we should go by the proper use of the law, and that's within, because I don't, it's an ordinance, and the reason for an ordinance is you have to get public comment. And to me, I don't think you should circumvent the idea that we want public comment.
This is an ordinance, right?
Yeah, it is. But, you know, council has the authority in the ordinance as codified to adjust the late fees based on good cause. If you determine that good cause dictates that it should be 10%, that's council's prerogative under this, I think.
I have no problem with that.
I believe the question was more about the effective date, like, because it wouldn't be effective until August 16th. So are we waiting until August 16th to then start reimbursing everyone? If that's, if that's where this is going.
Well, we have, we have two applications on tonight for this. My thought is, you know, if this is the way the council wants to proceed with it, if you take that approach with these two, unless there's some other factors that I'm not hearing, and I read the submissions of both of them, and it sounds like to me that it was this mailing, I didn't get it on time, but, you know, right, am I...
Never got it.
Okay, so either you never got it, or you didn't, whatever. And I don't mean that to be flippant, but that's, you...
You have 27 years, you have to...
So, so sir, let me, let me, that's what I said earlier, is that I read the submissions, and the goal of this is to have safe rentals, and these were two examples of people that I think faithfully paid over years, and there was a record of that, so. And why don't you come up to the microphone as well, so we can, if you don't mind?
And if you wouldn't mind just stating your names and address for the record, please?
You gotta put the green light on.
Thank you.
And speak right on into that microphone, okay?
Hello. My name's Jamie Rulon, and my husband Wayne. Yes, 27 years we've been owners, and we had the problem with the mail. We also had a little delay or something in the fire inspection. Our inspection wasn't until May 16. So I heard you say something about they had to be done before May 1st, and I'm like, we were there April 13th to make this appointment, or to make this scheduling, and I don't know exactly why or what happened, but it wasn't until May 16. So I was under the impression that you had to have that certificate before we could get a mercantile license. So I wasn't worried about paying the fees, because I thought, well, I'll just wait and wait. So by May 25th, my husband called the licensing office, and they said, and they sent us an email, and it showed LF. And, well, I didn't know what LF was, because I never received the March 7th letter that came with it, because of, I guess, the mail, I'm not sure why. But I did have another problem. The mail sent us, or sent you guys this, and they sent me back for the fire inspection payment, so I had to come in. That's when I paid that, on May 13th, or April 13th, sorry.
Can I just interrupt? Because I don't think any of us want to have people have to march in here like this, bringing their mail and their sob story, which I appreciate, because 27 years of payment is exactly what the city wants.
I'm gonna watch you when you're done, though.
Okay. So this is exactly why we're talking about, let's get this to the 10% and make sure that people are also getting phone calls if they're late, you know, making, as a courtesy reminder and that kind of stuff, I think is important.
When it said LF, and it was the whole amount of what I owed.
Right.
I'm like, that doesn't mean that.
Right, right.
It must mean something else. And I talked to his sister. She said, oh, it must be local fire.
Local fire.
So I thought, that's great, we're giving a donation to the local fire.
So, and I think this is a perfect example of, you know, owners who are ready, willing, and able to participate in the process have demonstrated that in the past. And this is the type of follow-up that, on the code enforcement side, you know, it can be a phone call, an email, reaching out, and having that communication. And, you know, then you have a more manageable late fee to work with, to get people back into compliance.
Sir?
One question.
Please.
I was under the impression, unless you have the scheduled with the fire inspection, you can't pay for the mercantile license. Is that right or wrong?
So you need to have your fire inspection paid for, and then they schedule you.
That was.
The inspection itself doesn't have to happen in order for us to issue a mercantile license, because there's no way that they're gonna go do 1,600 inspections in a two-month span. So so long as you pay and schedule your fire inspection, which we check with the Fire Prevention Bureau for every single license, then we can go ahead and issue a mercantile license. We would never turn away anybody trying to hand in a mercantile payment. We always take in the payment, make sure it's stamped, because we don't want to charge late fees unless we have to. And then we check to see if fire's been paid. If fire hasn't been paid, we still have that stamped in as received, but we do not issue a license until fire's paid. That's been historically the process.
Is that a return to sender envelope? Is that what that is?
No, you got it.
Okay, okay.
You received it, I guess, in the mail, and the lady at the fire, she, she, did she send it back? Yeah, she sent it back to me. Oh, yeah, she sent it back to me.
Okay.
And then I came in to pay it for the fire inspection.
Oh, okay, okay.
That was...
Got it. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
That was April 5th, she mailed it back to me.
Okay, okay.
I think we can work on this with this in two different ways. One, introduce the amendment to the ordinance, and then separately reimburse the late fees. I don't think we should necessarily have to wait till this becomes official law.
No, we don't have to.
I don't, I'm just saying, it's too many, it's two different things.
I agree.
I agree.
You can memorialize the refunding and confirming the 10% in the ordinance, but you can, as a policy decision, pursuant to the ordinance that we have on the books now, you can say, look, this is, this is now 10%, if that's what you want to do.
I think that's what we want to do. Okay. All right, so do we need to make a motion in regards to that?
So it was, I think, it was amended.
It was added to the agenda.
It was added as amended to the agenda, so it was not yet introduced yet.
Do I have a motion to introduce?
Still moved.
And just to be clear, because we have two, is, there's another, would you like to just come up so we can hear you out as well?
Sit down.
Let's do it one at a time, though. Let's pass the ordinance, and then I absolutely want to hear, but let's...
I know, but this is, part of this ordinance is to address what they're here for, so just, so we don't...
Missed.
It's up to council, but it just kind of makes sense to hear her out before that.
I revoke my motion for now.
Thank you.
Deanna, I received your letter. I think you made very good valid points, and I'm sorry that you even have to be here, so that's why I'm making this ordinance.
I'm sorry, too.
Yeah.
Ma'am, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. 21 days ago, I came into this building, and I left, left really very upset. My name is Deanna Brown. I've been a business owner of Antiments right around the corner on Washington Street for 31 years. I've been religious about paying my fees, whether it's a fire inspection or a mercantile license. This year, when I went to put up my fire inspection, and I finally got approval on the 31st, I realized that my mercantile license was out of date. So I went, I called City Hall, and they alerted me that it was pending, and I'm saying to myself, what do you mean by pending? So they said, we'll get back to you. So the following day, on June 1st, which is really critical, I received an email from the office, and they indicated to me that I had a mercantile license that was out of date. The fee was $1.75, and there was a late fee of, it was $200. So I went from $1.75 for one late mercantile license to $3.75. And if I had, by the time the clock struck 12, the night that I called, it went up another $100, and the city never alerted me. So then I looked at the email, and it indicated that it only had one license. As a result, this whole new process converted from one bill, one license, five licenses, and fees, to five bills, and they added these $75 per license. So my mercantile license went from 2021, from $4.60, to $8.75 to me as a 90% increase as a business.
Ma'am. Ma'am, excuse me.
Yes.
Just, and council has gotten your submission, I got your submission, the manager's office had got the submission, clerk's office got your submission. We read through it, and some thought went into the response tonight. So I wanted to just, the reason for bringing you up was to make sure that you heard the discussion that we had before about why council might consider making an adjustment. Did you hear that discussion?
Yes, I did hear it hardly. It's hard to hear in this.
Okay, so council is considering an ordinance that would amend that and taking action on, to adjust the late fees to just what it was before.
Right. But I do have some issues beyond the late fees, so maybe after we get this resolved, I can go into those issues.
Well, we're only here to discuss the late fees right now, and if you have any other concerns, you can bring them to council and city clerk's attention, and we can hear them out. But we're only here to deal with the late fees, and that's what council was in the middle of doing. But I wanted to make sure that, I know that you came here, I think council appreciates showing your face and coming here and talking about this, but wanted to make sure that you understood that.
I will state for the record that my late fees were $1,000. So I walked out of City Hall paying my license, mercantile license, for five mercantile licenses from $4.60 last year to $1,875 this year. And as a result, in the last 21 days, it has really upset me as a business owner. And as a result, in the last 21 days, it has really upset me as a business owner, and well of respect in the city of Cape May.
Where are we at? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, council? Are you ready for roll call? Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, for direction for my office, while this is introduced, we are able to go ahead and start at request, at pending written requests by the applicants, issuing reimbursements to these individuals, but still retaining that 10% late fee. We are not waiving the late fee, correct?
This is not a waiver of the late fee. It's a, an adjustment, adjustment of the late fees, this, these two. So ma'am, your, whatever the amount of the fee was, is going to be adjusted to 10%, not the full amount.
10% compounding each month, which is how it has always been.
That's correct.
Okay. And do I have authorization, moving forward, to anybody who has already been charged a late fee, if the request comes in to adjust the same? I can go ahead and do that without bringing it back to council?
Yeah, I believe it was council's intent to apply this uniformly, and even to those that were paid previously.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. We have first floor and second floor. On my mercantile last year, it always says two, and then there's just a 50 dollar and a 25 dollar fee, just one, and that's it. This year, it was two separate entities.
Is this on the late fee, or?
Not, well, and I got late fees on both, yeah. I didn't know, you know, because I'm paying the extra 50 on both, and 25, the 75 on both, and last year I had only paid the one fee plus two mercantile license, which I never received two separate little mercantile license before.
You had the same thing, right?
You had several.
Yeah, that's, mine went up 75 dollars per license, and to me, last year I only paid one of those fees, which is parking and tourism, and I think there was a third fee for 10 dollars. And that's my issue, too, is why did I, my mercantile went up for every single license 75 dollars, like you did as well.
Right, right.
It seemed very unfair.
But we're getting out of the late fee discussion. I'd appreciate it if you want to stick around and have public comment, that's fine. And we did have this for months and months and months, some discussion on this, I assure you. But for late fees, that's what we're discussing right now. Again, I'd be happy to have you have public comment, say whatever you'd like. Okay, all right, I appreciate it, thank you very much. And I, look, I just want to say, I think the fees that you receive were ridiculous, which is why we're changing it, so I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, council, we have a discussion on the Business Improvement District Brick Project.
Okay, and I asked for this to be on the agenda, being part of the bid. The bid has talked about doing fundraising, and they wanted to do a brick, brick project where they would sell bricks, but it happens to be in the city of Right-Away, where they would be installing these bricks. They have a lot of.
Just to be clear, the whole mall is in the city of Right-Away, right? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where in the mall is, would this be?
They're looking, well, actually, the first area, it would be kind of off in the offshoots, like where Casals is, or Bath Time, in those areas, they would, they would be looking at, they would look at like a 10 by 10 area, start with maybe, you know, 100 or 200 bricks, see how the project goes, sell them for fundraising projects. They gave me some areas that they're looking at doing as far as fundraising for, because I asked the question, like, what projects are you looking at? And then I had Chris Gillen-Schwarz take a look and see if there's any conflict, the way that, the way that everything is written as far as the bid and the Right-Away. They're looking at increasing security cameras on the mall, you know, speakers on the mall, redoing the bell sign, pruning the trees on the mall, so there's a lot of things that they're looking at doing, and they just don't have the funds. And they thought that this one might be a good way to raise, raise money, but because it's in the city of Right-Away, I wanted to bring it back here for discussion.
So, right now, there's no bricks in those areas?
There are bricks, but these are going to be memorial bricks.
Okay, so the bricks that are there are going to be taken out?
They'll be taken out, like in small areas to begin with, and then the new bricks will be put back in, and they're the same, same exact size bricks, and, you know, in a closed area, because if you go out there, there's concrete kind of barriers, there's certain areas that the bricks are set in, we're looking at doing it in one area first, so it would be, you know, kind of in that area.
And they would be paying for the bricks to be put back in?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know what the expense would be for the city.
There is no expense, but because it's in the city of Right-Away, is, that's the reason I have to bring it back here. And I don't know if you want to add anything else to that?
I think the goal, the way that it was, the way that the bid, I think, envisions this, is really a fundraising mechanism for them, to pay, to continue to pay for themselves in that area, which is the goal of the bid. And it's not so much the selling of the bricks, but it's the placing of the bricks, that I think they wanted to get some feedback from council to make sure that that's something that council would like to see for that area.
I mean, I think it would be nice, I guess I worry about the safety aspect of it, if they're, when they're put back, if they're put back, you know, high or low, is it going to cause a trip hazard? You know, what do we do with the bricks taken out, since we, it was paid for by the city to put the bricks in? I just have those questions.
Yeah, and the bricks are the same size, so that's not an issue as far as the safety hazard of it.
I think, I think it's cement underneath of it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Which is good for a new brick, it should be easy to, you know.
Yeah, because there are trees there, and clearly, it's, with it being a cement, not a sandset bed, it, there's not, there's no lift on any of the, some areas you go to, where it's a sandset base, there's a lot of lift where trees and so forth, you know, they.
Okay.
And I think we just got to make, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That when we put it around the trees, we don't put the bricks all the way up to the trees, because I think we're killing some of those trees on the mall by putting the bricks right up to the trunk of the tree.
Yeah, it's only going to be in the areas that are kind of on the offshoots right now.
Okay, I didn't know there was trees in those areas, that's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Like, yeah, no, like I said, these are, there's concrete, kind of like a barrier that encloses a small area of brick.
Okay.
I just want to say, I'm in support for this. I just want to make sure that this does not alter the bid budget that the council approved, that's all.
They're going to have, they'll be responsible coming back here with that as part of their budget.
I'm in support.
Cool, okay.
Everybody's in support of it, then?
Absolutely. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, next, council, we have several ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. First off, we have 465-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 510 of the city code concerning disclosure of the existence of water-related emergencies, and there is a public hearing this evening, mayor.
I'm sorry, pardon me, is anyone here to speak on ordinance 465? Disclosure of water existent, of existing, existence of water-related emergencies, sorry.
It's a mouthful.
Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, I'll make the motion to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have 466-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 166 of the city code to establish a harbor master in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion, pardon me.
Public hearing.
Is anyone here to speak on 466, ordinance to establish a harbor master in the city of Cape May? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
467-2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the city code regarding the allocation of funding for the tourism utility.
Anyone here to speak on 467? Mr. Roush?
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. I wonder if, before I make my comments, if city council or the solicitor would explain the purpose for this change? Why are we amending an existing ordinance? Obviously, there should be a purpose, and I think it would be interesting to know what that is.
I can explain that, Mr. Roush, I think this is something that was pointed out by the, our CFO, and I think rightly noted that we have a current provision in there that, and I'm using a million dollars as like, just a clean number to work with, because that's the starting figure in that code, it goes up 2% a year, but anything over the million-dollar threshold is automatically plugged into the tourism utility under the current code. And council recently enacted the occupancy tax provisions that establishes 3% and applies to both hotels and motels and transient rentals. So you're having all this transient rental income potentially from the occupancy tax, and if you don't change this, you're, you're leaving now a change of circumstances with an increase in revenue, which MTRAC projected when they presented this to council, and that money is just automatically going to be put into the tourism utility, because we're dealing with an old, and now potentially outdated code provision.
And if I could just add to that, that would be beyond anything to make it solvent. So as you know, it's a, it's a utility, and it's supposed to be self-liquidating, so that would, as written, anything more that would come in would have to stay within the tourism utility, which could increase the tourism utility well beyond what would make it flat, you know, not, not at a loss, but at a, at a major gain. So that was, the thought was, giving the CFO and the city manager and city council through the approval process, the power to use it for capital expenditures. I mean, we all talked about the police station, or the water, water plant, yeah, the reverse osmosis plant. So those types of issues that we want to be able to use that money for.
And, and the follow-up to that, too, is the way that the amendment is written, that the allocation of that and the explanation of the funds coming in is anticipated to come during the budgetary process pursuant to the Faulkner Act, which has to be presented to council annually. Council, you know, manager and CFO, they put together the budget, but council approves it after public comment, questions about how much occupancy tax revenue came in this year, and how are we applying it? So I think this amendment contemplates that discussion happening at this table on an annual basis.
Thank you. The current ordinance provides for a million dollars as basically a credit to the taxpayers in the city. The proposed ordinance removes that. Am I correct in that?
No. It doesn't remove the concept of a credit, what it does is just, it doesn't force the city to allocate anything over that million-dollar threshold, it just automatically into the tourism utility. Because I think, I think the city anticipates, the examples in the code point to, you know, a million eight, and then, you know, 80,000 getting plugged into the tourism utility, and 1,000, you know, staying in the general fund. In the circumstances that we're dealing with now, we're looking at substantial amount of income over that million-dollar threshold, which I don't think is, was the intent at the time that that was enacted.
Yeah, but there's, there's certainly provisions in the existing ordinance to take excess, what I call, excess money beyond the tourism utility budget, and use that money so long as it is tourist-related. I think there's no, am I correct in that assumption, that if there's, if there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in that account, that the tourist utility has not budgeted to use, the city has the opportunity to take that money and, and spend it frankly on any quote tourist program?
Sure, and then what this does furthermore to that is, if you have all, a substantial amount of money over that amount, it doesn't limit you to the tourism utility, you can look at capital projects.
That's my understanding as well. As an example, the fire company is looking for a vehicle, and let's say there's, you know, four, 500,000 dollars that's not been spoken for, the city council could consider that under the current ordinance, and buy another fire truck.
Potentially, but they could also, with this amendment, have all that discussion together during the budget process, and you could look at that, that figure totally, and figure out how best to apply it through the budget. You know, that's another option. I think we're almost talking about, almost talking about the same thing, Mr. Roush. It's usually the way we interact, almost talking about the same thing.
Well, it appears to me, looking at it as a taxpayer, there's a million dollars coming off the bottom line for the taxpayer's credit. That's basically three cents in the budget. So you take that, that plus away from the taxpayer's side of the column, and it's going to have to be made up.
No, this, is anything over a million, so we, we would still be making those tourism utility payments, which includes City Hall, excuse me, Convention Hall. So that, Convention Hall payments would still be made, but what this would allow us to do is, anything over that amount, once we balance the tourism utility budget, we can then use some of those, that income for, again, capital expenditures.
I just want to make some clarification, because I think, I think I can clarify this. Number 10, right, when we say the amount of occupancy tax received by the city pursuant of chapter exceeds the sum of a million, right, 2% subsequent each year, so that million, that first million is supposed to go to the taxpayers, and we're taking that out. That's what's striked in here, is that part, and I think that's Mr. Roush's concern.
That's one of the points I'm trying to make.
And we're not leaving it in that the first million dollars for this occupancy tax is supposed to go to the taxpayers. And from what I understand, it was, when it was proposed by the governor Whitman, it was to offset the cost of communities with the tourism economies. That's why that was supposed to go to the taxpayers, offset that.
Just to clarify, so Mr. Roush, to put it another way, your concern is, you, you're concerned that the city may put too much into the tourism utility, without this guarantee that it's only anything after a million?
There's a bunch, there's a number of provisions, how the tourist utility, or the, the tourist utility gains money, gains revenue, there's a long list of them, it's in the current.
Right, but do you understand my question, though? Like, the way that this functions is, the tourism utility doesn't get any of the occupancy tax, this is the current version, not the amended, until you reach that million-dollar threshold. So anything over that threshold, if it's 60 grand over a million, the 60 is what goes into the tourism utility, the million stays over here.
Right.
Which you like that, right?
Certainly.
So the concern, where, where this amendment came from, is to recognize that there may be a substantial amount over a million, that maybe we don't want to automatically just allocate into the tourism utility, because a million could be light.
Can I just try to simplify this a little bit? Tourism utility pays for Convention Hall, that pays the bond, tourism utility.
I'm sorry, I disagree, that's paid by the taxpayer? There's no revenue from the tourist utility going to pay the bond for the, for the Convention Hall?
Mr. Roush, I have asked you several times if you wanted to rewrite this and hand it to us. All I want to be able to do with this is be able to pay for extremely important capital expenditure projects. That's all I'm asking us to do. Because we want to be able to do the police station, we want to be able to do the water department, that's all we want to do. So I would table this and let you write it, if you want.
That's not my function, excuse me.
But I'm saying, give us your suggestions, let, let us know what you would like to see to make it better, and I'm happy, happy to hear that, and then we can all vote on it. You know, I mean, obviously, it's going to be voted on by council, but I see Mr. Blasko.
I would, I would just like to take this out of the ethereal and into actual numbers. If all things stay current, we're projecting about 3.8 in the occupancy tax. Taking that 1 million and moving it all the way up to 2022. Taking that $1 million and moving it all the way up to 2022, you're talking about $1,218,994 and maybe some change.
Yeah, that's the 2%.
That's what would come to the taxpayers. That would put $2,612,686 into the tourism utility. This amendment allows it all to be spent throughout the entire budget. So it's actually tax relief to the taxpayers.
I fully supported that from the beginning. Eight years ago, the taxpayers was in this room trying to get the 3%. This isn't something that we don't support.
Right.
But I want to make very certain that the $1 million that this, the existing ordinance has in it as a credit to the taxpayer remains.
Well, but this brings it all in, so it's almost redundant to say the entire occupancy tax goes toward the city budget, and another million on top of that has to go to the city budget.
Okay. We're well over five minutes, if you don't mind. Let me ask Council a question. This isn't necessary, but I will say, we have asked for any comments on this, and I have received none. I think we all have the same exact goal up here, which is to be able to use this money for very important expensive projects that we have moving forward. So if somebody would like to table this, if they think they could make it better, I'm fine with that, as long as that's all our goal. I have to say, I think what it does now already does that personally, but if anybody feels that we could add something to this, would be happy. But I know that MTRAC supported this, and...
I just need to think it needs clarification. I think, I think it's, I think we're all on the same page. I think it just needs maybe more words put in it and not just all the strikeouts.
So if we...
And I'm willing to do that.
If we table this, then it means that, and we don't do something soon, it means that the tourism utility is going to get...
Well, we have up until the end of the year.
Okay. And I'm just saying that if we don't fix this, the reason we did it is the tourism utility is going to get millions of dollars. And I think the beauty of this amendment is that the tourism utility from now on will have to get a budget, they have to present a budget to the city, and the Council has to approve the budget, and so will the public.
Well, that's always been happening. That's always had to happen with the tourism.
Except they got, on top of that budget, they got whatever was over $1 million in the occupancy tax. And this is saying, no, we can't do that. We cannot do that. That's crazy.
Well, then let me make another suggestion, one more suggestion. We vote on this this evening, but allow anyone, if you have suggestions on how we can amend it in the future, we'd be happy to hear them. That would be another thing that we could do. So we could table it, or we could, we could pass, you know, vote to pass it, and if people feel strongly that it should be amended, they could, they could make those comments to Council, and we could consider that.
Or if it's passed, all these comments can be brought into the next budget discussion when this comes up again. If you pass it, that's what this contemplates.
Mr. Meyer, do you have a...
But there is, there's one, one comment I'd like to make.
And these comments will all be in the minutes, too. I'm sorry, say that again, Mr. Roush.
Briefly.
Mr. Jaeger, any money that is in the tourist utility kitty as we go through the balance of the year, those monies can now be taken out of the tourist utility and spent on anything City Council decides to do that is a benefit to tourism. It's not restricted.
So you're saying the budget is not the budget for the tourism utility?
I think we're really talking about the same thing.
Yes.
We're all, everybody is talking about the same thing. You want to have...
So, yeah, I'm, so who's got the job of fixing the language on this?
I drafted the language. I think the language is fine, because it contemplates that you're going to evaluate this on an annual basis through the budget process, and all the questions that Mr. Roush were asking can be brought back up when it comes time and you have a budget, and you look at the occupancy tax revenue, and you look at your capital projects.
Does anyone else have comments on this ordinance? No? Okay.
I'd like to see you table it and rework it and come back and have a clean ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roush.
Thank you.
Okay. We have two options, essentially. We could table it, or we could pass it, and if we get good suggestions, which I'm sure we'd all be happy to hear, we could amend it at a later date. So that's kind of where we're at.
Well, I know we're not in a rush, but...
Right.
You, if Council is considering tabling it, you know, this is second reading for adoption, you could table it to the next, you could table it to July 7th?
July 5th.
July 5th?
And then changes are going to probably be...
And if you, you may receive comments, you may not. So you could potentially have a second adoption at that time.
If no changes are proposed.
My concern with that is the changes may be significant.
And if so, we need to restart the process.
We'll be really restarting the process and looking at...
It's another month and a half after the 5th.
If not later approved.
Probably September.
When would that take us?
I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but if you reintroduce something as amended on July 5th, it would be the first meeting in August.
We're getting...
End of August.
We're getting late.
End of August, early September.
I really think we should call for the vote. And again, this is a living document. If we get suggestions, I'd be happy to amend this ordinance at a later date.
And I'll point out, if the concern is, well, what's, what's going to happen to the money that comes in for occupancy tax revenue? This already contemplates that that discussion is going to happen annually.
All right. Do I have a...
Can I ask you a question, Chris? Is there a reason why you took out the first part of 10? Because that's, I guess, my little thing, the amount of, is that the first, it's talking about chapter 457 that exceeds $1 million. It basically goes towards, I guess, capital. And is there a reason, and then my second question is, is there a reason why you put in the other thing saying that the city manager and CFO in the budgetary process, isn't that, wouldn't be already, why was that added?
To confirm that that discussion would happen through Council's approval of the budget.
But when, it doesn't, wouldn't it always be that way? I just want, I'm trying to figure out why...
Yes, but it, it's just something that, there's no harm in putting it in there to make clear how we intend that discussion to unfold.
And so it's not that they're allowing the city manager, the CFO, during the course of the year, decide what to do with that money. It's all by, during, done during the budget process.
Budgetary process pursuant to the Faulkner Act.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
To be clear, the motion is to adopt.
A motion to adopt, yeah. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or comments, Council?
I would just like to say, whether we get substantial changes, whether we table this or not, we're going to have to start over anyway, so I'm okay with moving forward for now.
I agree with that. And I'd just say, for the record, and I would like to see it in the minutes reflected, that A, I don't see this as in any way removing payment for the bond on the Convention Hall, the tourism, this, we should still pay for that through the tourism utility contributions so that the taxpayers are not paying it, which I understand was the original intention, and that is still in this, by the way. And two, that I see these funds to be used for major capital expenditure projects. You know, yes, that could mean some other smaller capital improvements that are important, but I would specifically mention the Police Department and the Water Department as major needs for the city at this moment.
But that's not in this ordinance.
No.
That would be up to whatever the, you know, the budget comes out to be each year. We can't, it's not really written in here, that's where it's going to go. It just allows us.
That's correct.
But it's not written in here.
No. But I would like my intentions to be reflected within the minutes.
Absolutely.
May I make a comment, too, please?
Please.
Any excess money used for capital expenses, I think, whether it's fire police, water, and other things, it does benefit the tourism.
Right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
But we have, we're losing focus, though, on the whole reason for this occupancy tax when it was originally started, was to give the taxpayers relief. That was a reason behind the occupancy tax, was to give the taxpayers...
Ultimately doing that.
That's what we're doing.
I'm just saying that, but we're making comments on, oh, it's tourism, this and that, but it goes back to the taxpayers.
Taxpayers are not paying for the events and other programs going through the city.
Right.
Correct.
And I should be clear, that's exactly what I meant.
Well, it's not really that they're not paying for it, it's that it goes towards things that are needed for the taxpayers and not just for tourism.
It's for both.
For both.
For both.
We need a, we need a good police department, we need good water to have tourism, so... Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm good.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. And again, I would be happy to hear any comments on that moving forward for an amendment.
Next, we have 468-2022, a bond ordinance providing for various beach utility improvements by and in the city of Cape May and the county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $445,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $445,000 bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof. And there is a public hearing there.
Anyone here to speak on 468? Bond? No?
I'm sorry, that's not my part-time yet.
Sure. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions?
I'd like to comment what Mr. Seager said at the last council meeting, maybe the city should look at the most-used bathrooms first, or things like that, you know?
Definitely.
I just have some comments on this. You know, we have, the first one is for public buildings, various improvements to city beachfront promenade buildings and grounds. Last year, we approved money for bathrooms, it didn't get done. I would have liked to have seen more detail put in there. I'm assuming somebody did some kind of feasibility study that came up with the $375,000. You know, to me, as a council, we should be planning for certain projects and putting these projects into a priority. And right here, when it says, you know, buildings and grounds, you know, is this going to be used for doom beautification, or are we going to do bathrooms? I would have liked to have seen it saying, we're going to use it for bathrooms, and it would have been definitely put in there. Because we keep saying we're going to do bathrooms year after year, and nothing seems to get done.
Well, wait, 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 wait. There's people working on that, and they're trying to get it done. So to say like, nothing's happening, I mean, if you want to volunteer to help make sure that happens, Deputy Mayor, do that.
Well, I think we had put it in the budget last year, and we didn't get anywhere with it.
I know for a fact that Councilwoman Lorraine Baldwin just met with an architect at the ticket office, in the back of the ticket office, to look at doing the public restrooms behind there, so we can remove the trailer that sits on Beach Avenue and maybe even get a little more parking, who knows? But get a nice things, restaurants, so, restrooms. So that is actively being worked on. And I got to tell you that we, we actually went out for an architect previously to do it. We got in a really high number, I won't say who it was, but we didn't, we didn't go with it. And then, anybody who's trying to do a project right now, trying to get an architect is extremely difficult. So it is being in the works. We are, we did just meet with an architect, looking at doing it. So it is in the works, and so it takes a while. These things are, you know, but anytime that you want to help with those things, let's do it.
So then, my next thing has to do with equipment. To bond anything, it has to be more than five years, or you can't bond for it. And we have $70,000, a useful life of five years, and it has to do with storage sheds and beach walkways. But I'd like to see this put into budgets and not be doing a budget where we do 0% increase, but we're bonding, what's the bonding, we're bonding, with all these bonds put together, we're at over $4 million. I would like to see us put it more into budgets so that we can, you know, plan for these and then pay for them. When it comes to sheds and beach walkways, that's something I think should have been put into the beach utility and budgeted for, and not just five years and, what is this, a 20-year bond that we're paying over? So that was my concern there.
Any other questions or comments, Council? Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
No.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Next, we have 469-2022, bond ordinance providing for various water sewer utility improvements by and in the city of Cape May and the county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $1,364,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,364,000 of bonds or notes of the city to finance the costs thereof.
Do, we have anyone from the public here to speak on 469, water sewer utility improvements? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, Council?
I just have another comment. Again, we're budgeting, we're taking a bond out for something that has a life expectancy of five years. It's hardware and software, computer upgrades, which, if we get five years out of it, we might be lucky. Again, that's something I think that we should be looking to put into the budget and not be bonding and paying all the fees that goes with the bond over, you know, years.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment, though, that, you know, we are looking to improve the existing water infrastructure, which is most of this at $1 million.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
470-2022, a bond ordinance providing for various 2022 capital improvements by and in the city of Cape May and the county of Cape May, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2,484,500 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,366,189 of bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
Does anyone here from the public to speak on 470? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
I just want to comment, this is 2.4 million. Again, we had a zero budget increase, but we're, we're taking bonds out, and there's a couple items in here, two different ones. One for $324,000, again, a life expectancy of five years, and $196,000, a life expectancy of five years. Again, these things should be put into budgets and not be bonded over years, that these things are going to be gone and we're still going to be paying for it. I would have liked to have seen certain items taken out and other items left in for this one, such as, you know, if we want to do the roads, that 1.25 million, maybe keep that one in. We have city buildings and facilities and park improvements in here, 622,000. A 10-year, I think as a council, we have to start planning on what our projects are going to be so that we can use money wisely. I'm not saying these aren't bad projects, but we have to prioritize on what these projects should be and when they should do. They might be great, but maybe we shouldn't be doing it this year, and that we should look at putting it in the budget, paying for it over a number of years, saving for it, and then doing certain projects. I think roads, like I said, are necessity, and they should be in the budget, but other things that maybe we should, we should save for and do when needed, if they only have a life expectancy of five years.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. I just will comment that we, you know, cities across the country bond, and this is part of the budgeting process, that we make sure we have the tools, the equipment, the roads, the water infrastructure, all of these important things that we have to have, you do through a bond, that's what you do, and this is what cities across the country have done. And yes, we've done that under a 0% tax increase, that took a lot of financial planning. This is not winging it, this is doing it through a strong financial plan.
And I just want to make a comment that, you know, while Crest decided that they weren't going to bond for any vehicles, that they would save for them and pay them through the budget. So there are other municipalities that like to do things by saving and then purchasing items and not bonding and paying for it after the items are gone and unuseful.
And if I, if I may make a quick comment, Leon Costello, when he was here, when we did our budget, there was a lot of talk about these bonds that... our budget, there was a lot of talk about these bonds that we were discussing right now. He said we are absolutely, you know, stable, this is not an issue, the city is on very good financial ground. Our CFO, our city manager, our deputy city manager, I mean, this is, this is not, you know, not said lightly, there's a lot of planning that goes behind this.
100%.
So, that's what I have to say.
And it is, again, it's important that we equipped everyone with the proper tools, and, and again, these are important bonds for our infrastructure, et cetera, so that it's, it's very important moving forward. And by the way, too, I will say, not only was it 0% increase, but also the largest surplus in the city's history that we've had, so that's part of this budget as well. Onto our public portion on resolutions only.
Yes, Mayor, public portions on the resolutions only, so anyone wishing to publicly comment on any of the resolutions listed on the agenda, please come forward at this time and give your name and address for the record.
Any public comment on resolutions only at this time? Seeing none?
Council, we do have the representatives for 19 Jackson Street here in regards to their request for the special conditions for the liquor license renewal. I'm not sure if you want to handle that separately off of the consent agenda, would you prefer they speak now, or council discuss?
Let's pull it just in case I do want to say something.
Okay, so we'll address that separately, okay? Any other items to be removed from the consent agenda?
156?
Okay. And I'm recommending 163062022, that's the resolution renewing the liquor licenses.
165.
Okay.
They're just minor things that I, I'm pulling them for.
Okay. Anything else?
Anything else, Council?
The occupancy tax report.
Okay. All set? All right. So on the consent agenda this evening, we've got the Cape May City Council regular meeting minutes dated March 15th, 2022, council work session meeting minutes dated April 5th, 2022, we've got special meeting minutes dated April 19th, and closed session meeting minutes dated April 19th. We have the fire incident report for the month of May, 2022, the police incident report for the month of May, 2022, tax collector report for the month of April, 2022, and the overtime report for the months of January through May of 2022. We have resolutions 164062022, resolution approving the, ah, Mr. Gallen Shorts, would you recommend that we pull 164, it's the club license renewal for the VFW, to give a brief explanation on how council can vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can remove that as well.
So we're removing 164 as well. Apologies, Council. We have 166062022, resolution authorizing a word of contract for the reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phase 6, formerly known as Phase 1 Village Green. 167062022, a resolution authorizing the city of Cape May to advertise for requests for qualifications or proposal for the position of water projects engineer for the city of Cape May for the duration of the water treatment project. 168062022, resolution appointing a member to the Cape May City Green Team. 169062022, resolution establishing a Kiwanis Club Park Task Force. 170062022, resolution approving a letter of agreement between the city of Cape May and the lifeguard association. 171062022, resolution appointing a member of the Cape May City Beach Safety Advisory Committee. And 172062022, resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
Some hoot.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay. So back to the acceptance of the occupancy tax report for the month of June, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I pulled this off the agenda, just because what we're talking about here, the actual revenue generated last year was 257,000, and from November to April, the actual revenue from that same time period this year was 520,000, so it's almost doubled. So, you know, continuing to, you know, continuing our discussion, you know, looking at, you know, what has occurred in the city, you know, we're liable to have a pretty, pretty good revenue as far as the occupancy tax is concerned, so I just wanted to bring that up. Okay?
That's great. Great news.
It really is.
Yep. Okay. We have a motion and a second, any other comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And we have 156062022, this is a resolution of the city of Cape May, authorizing change orders number one and two for the contract with Charles Marandino LLC, for the reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phases 3 and 4, contract M25, this was tabled from the June 8th council meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Questions, comments, Council?
The reason why I pulled this was, I had talked to Neil about this yesterday, about there was no city sign-off on this, so I just want to put it in the minutes that Mr. Bull will sign off on this.
So, the mayor will sign off once council authorizes it?
No, there's no certification right here for the resolution, for the...
Oh, on the voucher?
For the purchase order, right.
Oh, okay, yeah, we always have the mayor sign the actual change order contract, and then...
Right, but it should be signed off by the city official at this point.
Okay, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 163062022, this is a resolution approving the alcoholic beverage license renewals for the 2022 to 2023 license year.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? And I think we do have an applicant here, if they'd like to speak at this time, that would be fine.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmembers Andrew Cattanees, on behalf of 19 Jackson Street, Inc., I'm here with Mr. Kolkowitz. We requested a few changes to the conditions that are attached to the license. Those changes were not incorporated into the draft before you, so I did want to take a moment to address those. If you'll recall, it was a couple months ago, we were here, and you all saw fit to approve an expansion of the license premises. That caused us to look at those conditions, and we did find a couple of inconsistencies, and therefore, we requested, requested these changes. As we look at the conditions...
Can I ask, just inconsistencies with the other license, is that what we're...
Exactly.
Okay.
That, as well as a couple housekeeping items, we realized that when we looked at them and realized they applied to the original Mad Batter site, we also realized they should be addressed while we're here. So there are seven conditions attached to this license. The first three are the standard conditions that seem to apply to all licenses throughout the city. In fact, those three are the only license conditions that were on the Decatur Street property that is undergoing renovations now, it'll be the Cricket Club, you previously all knew it as the Marion Inn. So, for that reason, our first request is that any conditions after the first three be clarified to only apply to the Jackson Street property, so that the, the Decatur Street property continues the way it always has. Then there are three additional conditions that we noticed when we took a look at it. The fourth condition deals with the type of music being played, piano, string, or similar without amplification. It is the only license in the city that seems to have this condition on it. I've reviewed them all, I don't know why it's there, particularly in light of the first three conditions that all speak to noise. So, we respectfully request that condition number four, that limits the type of music just be removed from the condition on the Jackson Street property. The sixth condition says that the license will be restricted to one bar only, it limits the size of the bar. Eventually, as we're looking at these, we know that the Mad Batter would love to put a service bar, some of the pressure off of its main bar, so that's why we've requested removal of the sixth condition. The seventh condition, we asked that that be removed as well, it's really not a big deal item, it says that food service has to stop at 12:00, alcohol has to stop at 12:30. We're okay with that 12:30 limitation, but we think that the food should be aligned with the beverage, so that, you know, the operator's not in a position where they could serve alcohol but not serve food with it, we just ask that those be aligned at 12:30. So, so quickly, those are the changes, that items four and six be removed, item seven just be aligned to a 12:30 final call, and that anything after the first three be clear that it just applied to the Jackson Street site and not to Decatur, which will be the Cricket Club. That's as succinctly as I could do it.
Any questions for...
I just, I just have questions. So, restrictions that go with the Marion Inn, do they transfer over to the Mad Batter?
These are restrictions from the Marion Inn now on the Cricket Club.
No, actually, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what happened was, the Marion Inn did not transfer their liquor license, the Mad Batter expanded their premises to the property that was formerly the Marion Inn.
Right.
And when I read these, I thought they were actually the Marion Inn's conditions, the piano stuff.
That's what I thought.
So, but we're only, so whatever, that's why I think Mr. Cattanees is making that distinction of, you know, they're requesting it only be on Jackson Street, because...
But where did these restrictions come from, then?
These seven were the original seven that have been on the Mad Batter site for years.
Oh, on the Mad Batter?
Right. But of course, that...
But the first three, the first three are...
The first three were also the same...
Included on the others as well.
The same three you saw on the other, right, so, you know, basically, all these others, if we allow it like this, all these others would then attach to the Decatur Street property and the Cricket Club, which, you know, that, that property's never been bound by that. And then these other sort of housekeeping items are things that, as we looked at them more closely, we realized they were, this was an appropriate time to take a look at them.
Okay, I just have some confusion here. So what rules are going to be pertaining to the Cricket Club?
Items one, two, and three, the first three rules will apply to the entire site, both buildings.
Which historically have been imposed on the Marion Inn?
And, yeah, so that's no change, they, those three, those first three conditions have always been on both sites, and we're proposing remain on both sites. And then we're requesting removal of condition four, we're requesting the condition...
Condition four is music, right? The one that says...
Yeah, correct, it limits it to piano, string, or similar without amplification. And like I said...
I'm not, this has not been enforced to the state, frankly, I mean, so I, I completely understand that one.
And four is only for the Mad Batter, right?
Four had historically only been for the Mad Batter, correct.
I have a question. Four and six, why wouldn't you want it to be for both restaurants? Is that, am I totally wrong by asking that?
No, we're asking that the conditions, four and six, be removed from the Mad Batter.
Right, 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 I'm sorry. Why wouldn't it be beneficial for the Cricket Club?
To remove it?
Yeah.
It's never applied to the Cricket Club.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's the reason, yeah. We just now have one liquor license covering two premises.
And, and so the first three would apply to both, is what they're indicating, the fourth regarding type of music, they're requesting be stricken, and then everything after this, what they're requesting at council is to basically have this read, the following conditions shall only apply to the Jackson Street site, and what they're proposing here would be...
Item five remains, that limits the service on the porches, absolutely, you, that should remain in place. Item six would come out entirely, I talked about our desire, their desire to have a service bar. And then item seven, just align those two times at 12:30 a.m. Again, on, on the Jackson Street property, the Mad Batter.
I guess with four, I guess I'm concerned with the fact, the manner that the sound of such music shall not be audible to the exterior of the premises.
But if you take a look at items one, two, and three, they really cover noise in detail, and it was item number four that was just so odd, like I said, this is the only site in town, based on my review of all of the conditions, that has this, this sort of unusual and, and unique condition. I, for my part, didn't see why it was singled out, the bottom line is, they've got to comply with the noise ordinance, they have to comply with items one, two, and three, just like everyone else, they can't create a nuisance. But to limit the type of instruments that play, and so you can't, Mayor, I think you're right, it's probably not been enforced in any event, it, it struck me as, as an odd item that should be cleaned up while we're here.
So, we're going to, with this, though, if we're keeping in the first two, or first three, to both, we're going to be allowing outdoor music at the Marion Inn, correct?
The, yeah, that, well, that has always been the condition, that's always applied there, right? Limited to the hours, outdoor music, limited to the hours of 12 to 9. Now, from a practical perspective, practical perspective, the Marion Inn really doesn't have a site, I don't want to keep calling it the Marion Inn, because it's not the Marion Inn, and the Marion Inn has moved on, that name exists elsewhere. The Cricket Club really won't have much ability to do that, but like I said, this, we're just looking to have this treated like a lot of the other businesses in town, that's why we're asking for item four to come out across the board, item six to come out to allow for that second service bar at the Mad Batter, align the times for item seven, and like I said, those, other than the first three, the remaining conditions would only apply on Jackson Street.
But if you take out six, that also allows you to have the bar at the Cricket Club, right?
That, that's the other, that's the other problem with it, that as this is drafted, it means you could have one bar between the two, between the two buildings, which is another inconsistency we needed to clean up.
How do you think we should handle this? Do we want to try to do this one at a time, on each issue?
My, well, I don't know, if, if we take a look at outdoor music, I don't know how they're, how they're planning on operating their business, is there, is there going to be outdoor music?
No, I mean...
It's all going to be indoor music?
Yeah, and keep in, keep in mind that there's limitations on the service of alcohol outdoors as well, again, consistent with those first three conditions, they just apply across the whole city.
Right, but I'm also taking a look at residential areas as well, so, you know, I, I, curious to find out, you know, how, how are things going to operate between the Cricket Club as well as the Marion, or the, the Mad Batter?
Council, I do want to emphasize that that condition has been in effect at both locations for years and years, about the, outdoor music shall be limited from 12:00 noon to 9:00 p.m. That has been imposed on these licenses and those properties for years at this point.
Yeah.
That's it.
But is the plan to have outdoor music? Mark?
Mr. Kolkowitz, you're not planning any grand outdoor music and, and change in operations?
To be honest with you, I was just trying to get open, and basically, the out... Thank you. The outdoor area is going to be mainly for, for parking, so I mean, I don't see us changing, you know, so, I can't build the Rock Stadium or anything, and basically, try to do some music inside like, like it's been there before, but yeah, the parking is parking, and we don't have any parking, so we're not going to give a parking.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and the sites aren't conducive to, to events outside, to be clear, you know, the, you know, the, the outdoor parking areas, et cetera, they are not licensed on either site, right? So, some properties are licensed to the property lines, these are just the buildings, within the buildings, so we're, there are protections in there.
Mayor, is this a good time to make a motion to amend this resolution?
Sure.
I'd like a motion to amend this resolution in regards to the Mad Batter Restaurant and Cricket Club, the third item to be removed, sorry, the fourth item to be removed, the The sixth item to be removed. And the seventh item should read, "The sale of food in the dining room of the hotel shall cease at 12:30 midnight each night."
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Have any questions or comments on that motion?
Just to clarify, did counsel intend also that all the conditions after the, the three to attach only to the Jackson Street property?
Jackson property.
Yes.
As the intention of my motion.
The first three would apply to both.
Okay, yeah.
I think all of them are going to apply to both, correct?
All of them will apply to Jackson Street under that.
Oh, well, yeah, there's only going to be.
And then only the first three would apply to the Marion Inn, which is, I'm sorry, the Cricket Club, which is the way that that property's always been treated anyway.
Any other questions or comments on it? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
This is to amend, thank you, yes.
Uh, councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Thank you all for your time.
Are you folks planning to have a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Cricket Club?
Uh, 2024.
Thank you all.
And we'll be able to have a drink till nine, uh, 12:30 then?
Great.
No, thank you very much. That's it. All right.
And a good one. See ya.
All right, next we have 16406, 2022, resolution approving the alcoholic beverage club license renewal for the 2022 to 2023 license year. This is for the Veteran Home Association or the VFW.
Did you want to give an explanation?
I can give a preamble to counsel for this one. The, similar to our discussion at the last meeting regarding club licenses, these are not subject to the conflict provisions of the conflict license statutes under, and, and ABC regulations are odd sometimes. So club licenses are exempt from the conflict license process, which means they're processed through counsel, even if there are interests present in these licenses. And counsel may have an interest in these club licenses. I indicated previously, and I maintain the position that I think that conflict, to the extent it, it exists, is remote in nature. And counsel would be acting conservatively to abstain from these votes. But if you don't have enough votes for these, you, you need to take action on this in some way, and that's why the rule of necessity is invoked, and counsel can vote on this as a body.
Simply put, there's members up here that are members of some of these clubs in town. We need a quorum to be able to take a vote, so that's, that's where it's at.
And these are all nonprofit, right?
Nonprofit.
Just a very involved council.
Okay, so we can take a regular motion then? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Do I have to?
This is, this is.
No, we don't have to abstain.
And.
No, yes.
You can if you want.
You can if you want. You don't have to.
Yes.
Just to be.
I did not, I'm sorry, Mr., Councilmember Yeager, I did not.
I was yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Sorry, Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so next we have 16506, 2022, a resolution supporting appropriations and levy cap exemption for a three-year period for increases in liability, workers' compensation, cyber liability, and property insurance.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And then I'd ask Deputy Manager, could you give us an explanation on this one real quick, add a couple people ask about it?
This resolution came at the request of our insurance company of the JIF, and it is simply asking the legislature to take the increase in insurances out from the 2% It has to do with some of the changes to their coverage, you know, increasing coverage for cyber attacks and, I think it's in there, property and some statute of limitation changes that occurred on some lawsuits.
The reason why I pulled it is we just had to add our name at the very end. It says name of municipality.
I caught that, I caught that today. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I made that change.
I just want to make a motion to amend to add Cape May City there.
Sure.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes. As amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as amended, opt as amended.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
All right. Any old business, counsel?
Counsel, any old business?
I just have some old business. It has to do with the live stream, and I just want to make everybody aware that we lost all the tapes that go back years. It's kind of like sad. It's like losing old movies.
It is sad.
And it's also a record, too. So I think, was it everything before January we lost?
Unfortunately, hopefully moving, moving forward, we're hoping that that isn't something that would recur again in the future with YouTube and Google being more reliable.
I just want to say, I was, before I brought this up in council, I had sent some emails. I guess I need to have clarification why we weren't paying the bills, that we lost these tapes.
Well, they aren't tapes, they're digital videos. And I would imagine that our six or seven years of multiple hour recordings created a large storage space. And sometimes the public payment procedure results in a late payment, and they were very eager to delete our videos.
I think I brought this up to you.
Yep.
It was February or so, that.
Yes.
Hey, what happened to livestream?
You brought it up as soon as we switched, yes.
And we reached out.
I guess I'm disappointed, that's all.
It was very difficult to contact anyone at the company, and there was no phone. It's only through ticketed emails and, because livestream doesn't really exist, we're dealing with Vimeo, and it was just very difficult even to have any kind of correspondence.
Well, I mean, they were corresponding with us, saying our bill was late, but.
They sent that email, didn't they? But didn't respond very promptly to any others, unfortunately.
I, my comment towards losing that is we have to make sure that all our meeting minutes are online, because I think it was 2019 and 20, we are missing some meeting minutes in there that are not.
We can try to go back.
We will ensure that all meeting minutes are available through our website to increase the availability of them and.
Of course. We'll go back and double check previous years to see which ones are missing.
I don't, not trying to give you a quiz, do you know how far back our meeting minutes go about now?
On the website?
Yeah.
I would say they're, they're pretty well posted until 2012, 2012.
Okay.
I think there might be some here and there that may have been missed. Prior to that, it would, it would be an undertaking for my office to scan them in. They're always available upon request. That would be an immediate, something that we would provide immediately to the public. But yeah, I have no problem starting to go back a few years and trying to upload any ones that appear to be missing.
We definitely have the time period of the videos covered.
Oh, absolutely.
And we'll make a, a little post letting people know that if they're looking for the previous meetings, that they should go to the minutes section of the website rather than the old livestream section.
Right, right.
Okay. Any other old business, counsel? City Solicitor, any updates?
I don't have anything tonight.
City Manager?
No, sir.
City Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. City Council Members, Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I just have one thing. Just like we were, well, we're looking for an RFQ for the demonstration project at this point. I just wanted to bring it up to counsel that we're working, the beach safety committee has worked for months tirelessly, and Mark de Blasio came on board as a volunteer. He's been a wealth of information. So at this point, we're, we're looking at requests for qualifications for a demonstration project, and there's a couple of agencies that, that we can reach out to, have them come up with computer generated models to see what the best way to address, because the way that our, our beach is facing, it's a lot different than the other beaches, you know, going up, going up the Atlantic. So we're going to look at, you know, what are some of the ways that we can address some of these issues? Okay?
That's great.
So that'll be coming up soon.
Okay. Councilmember Meyer?
Oh, and happy summer.
Happy summer, oh, yeah.
First day of summer, right?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to first point out that we have our Shade Tree Commission flag on the stage here, 40 years of Shade Tree service to the city. According to Jay Schatz, the chairman of the, of the commission, that we are one of a handful of cities in the entire state to have that many years.
That's awesome.
I've also, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that I've given a packet to each of the Shade Tree Commission members, to, inside the packet was our Shade Tree ordinances as well as West Cape May ordinances and our application, West Cape May's application. If there's anything that they want to change or make stronger, I asked them to give me some direction so I can give it to our solicitor.
Right.
And then, then he will give us some, or recommendations for us to vote on. And the last thing I just want to bring up, I know we have a lot of events going on this summer, which is fantastic. I'd like to see bringing back some of the adult dancing at the convention hall, the ballroom dancing, that kind of stuff. I know one person, he says he's got a large contact of people that are really interested in it. And, and if we can work out some kind of program with Casey in the convention hall, find some dates that, you know, that are off and especially during the fall season, give people things to do. I think it's.
Do you want to work on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. That'd be awesome, awesome.
I think Stacy's, you know, weirdest person I'm talking about, too, so.
If you're talking about line dancing or anything like that, I'd be the last person you'd want to help with that, but.
There is line dancing scheduled.
But that doesn't.
There will be line dancing, so. Yeah, I'm not sure when, but it's scheduled.
We'll work on that.
Cool, that's awesome. All right. Deputy Mayor?
I just have one question, because I, I guess I was in the impression that Lafayette Street was going to be paved in front of the school. Is that still going to get done before next year, or what's the status of that?
No, it's not.
Okay. So when do we have a date when it's going to be done for paving in front of the school?
Spring.
And then the bump in?
Yeah, we're, we're meeting, matter of fact, Lou, the mayor and I are meeting with Bob Church from the county on Thursday to get an update on all that.
Okay, because I.
We're still pushing to make it fast as we can.
Yeah, because I thought we were going to do it next year, but then I thought it was got pushed up. That's the only reason why I was asking then, I thought it was pushed up.
I think I can answer that. Of course, it was supposed to be done this year, we all know. The last update we got was it was supposed to be this spring. But what the, I think the one thing that you mentioned is we are asking that that phase, because I think it's two phases, gets pushed to the beginning, and the county seemed to indicate that that would be okay. Because that's the, as everybody knows, that's kind of the worst part.
It's also like a safety issue.
Exactly.
For making a bump in there.
So their initial reaction was a positive one, but we will, we will ask that.
Okay. And the only other thing I want to state is, if people are listening, swim near lifeguard. But we're not even in the summer yet, and we've had a lot of issues, not in Cape May, but in the surrounding communities.
That's true. Thank you. It's, that's such a, it's so obvious to say, but, you know.
And that, that goes for after hours.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of times I'm at the beach after hours, and I see people come home, down with their families, they're not paying attention, and the kids are in the water, and I'm a nervous wreck, because I'm watching.
I'm so glad you brought that up, Stacy. I just saw a New Jersey TikTok channel, it said that the drownings are, are up insanely across the state, so, you know.
And almost all of them are on unguarded beaches.
Yeah.
Councilman Yeager?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, and thank you for your update on the bicycle committee, too, as well. Just quickly, I do have one sad one that I do want to offer our condolences to the Riccio family. Lou Riccio, as many folks know in Cape May, was just a wonderful man and just recently passed, and our condolences to, to him and his entire family. I know the service is tomorrow. I also want to compliment, again, the DPW on the work that they did on the bathrooms at Ocean Avenue. It's still light out tonight, unless we have a lot of public comment. You might want to go check out that bathroom on the way out of. They did just a wonderful, wonderful job. It is the longest day of the year. And then also, again, the bike racks that they got in, it really looks great, just, and the nice thing with the U-shaped ones is they can kind of put them in some different areas in town. And then also, I took my kids to Camp Cape May, and I just want to say to counsel, express, and I know you guys know this, but just how cool it is to have all those kids in town running around, having a great time, and, and how nice the rec department does for that program and what that means to our families in town. It's, it's really a great service, so thank you. With that, let's open it up for public comment.
Mayor, one last thing. Friday night at 7 o'clock, the dedication of Norman's Beach.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for the public?
Please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody, again. Deanna Brown, Washington Street, owner of Antmetz for 31 years. I like to, when I found out about my mercantile license, I did some investigation, and I, as I mentioned earlier, my mercantile license for 2022 went from 460 up to 875. And the process of going from a one statement to a five statement increased, and I think this lady over here mentioned it as well, is that now you have the parking fee and you have your tourism fee repeated on every single license, and that's a result of $75 extra per license. So my, it increased by 75 times five, and that's why my increase went from 460 to 875. There was an increase of the apartment size, which was 75 to 100. I'm not objecting to that, but I am objecting that my license for, five licenses for one building has been increased by, and I was wondering why that took place. And does every other mercantile licensed city of Cape May, did that happen to them as well, is my first question. You had the same experience, is that correct? Yes?
Well, it was a pretty major subject that we, we talked about for several months. It came from our M-Track Committee as a recommendation. One of the major issues that we are having is the, the recognition that so many of the homes in Cape May have now become rental properties. And that has, we have had to make an adjustment to that simple fact within, they, they had all these statistics, but within the last five years, the amount of rentals in town has more than doubled, which is pretty incredible. Our mercantile licenses, it's, and, but what the main idea was, that M-Track recommended to counsel, was the square footage, was, what was unfair was you had a single condo, one-bedroom condo, paying the same amount as a beachfront property that maybe, and some of them were literally, anyway, they had examples selling for $15,000 a week. Now, as I'm sure you understand, that does put a lot of stress on the city and are you, the things that we need to do to operate when they have 20 people or more in one place? Which, again, some of these places were just family residences not that long ago. So there was a recognition of the changes that have occurred in the city of Cape May over, over the last few years, one of which was the fact that we weren't even taxing Airbnb, which, A, you had all these other entities that were, were paying a 3% tax, yet the Airbnbs were not. And as many of you know, we looked at all these statistics of the huge increase of Airbnbs within the city of Cape May. So what was happening was you had all of these businesses that were being run at no tax dollar revenue to the city. And frankly, what was occurring then was we, we, we know we have over 1,000 Airbnbs in town. All of those folks are using taxpayer-funded, whether they call an ambulance, or the police department, or the fire department, or use our water, all of those things. It was, we, we felt like, frankly, the residents shouldn't have to be subsidizing those businesses, which is basically the model that was in place. So, we did put the 3% tax on Airbnb rentals. And again, now that money coming in will be used for really important projects, like the police department. And that was the discussion we were having this evening. The police department, the water department, which frankly, and I have to say this, is in dire need. Tonight, we put out an RFQ for the hiring of an engineer for the water department. We're looking at a $30 million project at the water department, which I recognize how much that is. We have to get a ton of funding to do that. So, there was a lot of discussion, and, and M-Track felt that, basically, a single apartment shouldn't be paying the same amount as a beachfront 20-plus occupant room. It's not perfect, but it was well debated by this counsel, and that's basically what we came up with. I don't know if that perfectly answered.
It doesn't answer my question.
Okay.
My question is, maybe you can help me here?
No, I wanted to hear your question.
Okay, yes. $75 is now being applied to every single one of my five licenses. In the past, I will only have one fee for parking and tourism. So, it went from $75, actually, it was maybe $80, because there was another $10 there, to 85. Is now going up to 375. That's my question, I think that's the same question you have.
Let me, uh.
It's those extra fees.
Okay, so, the, the idea of, you had one license for five units?
I had five licenses, but I had one receipt, one mercantile, and I only paid the parking and the tourism fee once for all five.
Okay.
Now, it's broken down into five parts, they all have the same fees.
And how much is the parking fee?
It's $50, and I believe the tourism is 25.
Okay, so an extra 70, you're, you're, you're happy to pay it once, you don't want to pay it five times?
Exactly, that's my point, I think that's your point, too? Yes. And I was wondering why that happened.
So, it was part of the new ordinance that counsel enacted, and part of the M-Track recommendations, that previously, one mercantile license applicant may, in past years, submitted one mercantile license application for five apartments, and were charged those mandatory fees once. With the new ordinance, that was a very public process, counsel enacted that each rental unit requires its own registration and application, and therefore are charged these additional fees. So, you, instead of being charged once, you have five units, that's five separate mercantiles, five separate stickers, five separate applications and registrations, five separate fees charged. Across the board, though, that's been for all 1,650 that we've issued.
So, if I have a whole house rental, do I get charged just one fee of $75?
If you have a single rental unit, you would be charged one time.
Okay.
If you have five rental units, you would be charged five times.
And, and you would pay a higher mercantile license fee?
You would pay a higher square footage fee, though.
Right, and, you know, so unfortunately, you know, that's pretty sad for a person like myself and other people that are affected by that. The second thing is, is. I now have a fan. I now have a fan in the summertime. When I paid my $1,875, I got my mercantile licenses. Every single envelope includes a mercantile license that says you, you know, been approved, that you can post in your house, but it has a sticker. I don't, I don't plan to use all five of these, so, to me, this is very ineffective and inefficient from the city of Cape May to send me five mercantile that go to the same residence. You know, to me, that, this is a little bit crazy. So, I just want you to be aware that the process, and, and as was mentioned, there's really not much to the process, but it has changed, for me, at least.
I can hear some of the frustration about this, because it is a change, right? And, and you, I think you two individuals coming in here, first of all, respect the fact that you come in here and, and want to speak to counsel about this. And your, your good examples of people that have faithfully paid over the years, have been part of the before and the after. But the goal of this was to make these units safer, because there's buildings, and we need to know how many units are in them, and we need to know that they're all inspected. So, that's the purpose of, we're not trying to send you fans, we're trying to make sure that the fire department, or the Fire Bureau, knows that they've been inspected or are scheduled for inspection, so that they can confirm that they're safe for guests when they come here in the summer. Safety is paramount with this, the fees are secondary, but that's the nature of the process.
Well, you know, my opinion, and certainly it's only my opinion, is that I think this is very, very ineffective. And I do think there's discrimination against people like ourselves to get, you know, $75 times five for all five units in one building, as, as far as my neighbor down the street, which has a whole house rental, which has 15 bedrooms, has 30 people coming in, and they're only being charged $75. That's my issue.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not discrimination, it's designed to be fair, and it's not perfect, right? But, that big mega mansion house example is paying a higher fee than you are, if you have small units that are below a certain square footage. So, it is designed to be fair.
And my last point is about, on my mercantile license, it now says that I have 733 square feet in each mercantile license. I have approximately 3,200 feet, if you take 733 times five, it's like 3,600 feet. Where did the city of Cape May get those numbers, is my question? I had nobody come to my house.
Tax assessor's office.
You know, visit me, yes. Oh, from you?
The tax assessor.
The tax assessor.
Deputy manager's tax assessor.
Okay, okay, so, you know, is it, I assume, you're assuming that it's up to date?
If there are discrepancies, if you feel there's discrepancies with the square footage, and I've done it a couple of times already this year, please call my office, we'll make an appointment, and I will check the property as it exists against the property record card, and we will correct any discrepancies that may exist. And it would go toward your overall assessment as well.
Okay, so they came from the tax assessor. Those are my points, thank you. And thank you very much for recognizing the issue of the discrepancy of the tax abatement, or I guess you call it the late fees. And I'm glad that you were able to recognize that 10% is reasonable, but certainly 100% isn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say.
Yes.
Point that the $100 is the cheapest fee for an apartment.
Yes, I understand that.
Do you remember what the largest?
I think those up to $500.
$500 for 5,000 plus square foot.
What was it?
$500 for a 5,000 or plus square footage home. And I did want to emphasize to Ms. Brown and to anybody listening, the reason you were sent five decals is because, as per this ordinance, each rental unit must have its own decal that's clearly visible in a window. So, I do recommend that you utilize them, and that you post them in those rental units.
But for 31 years, I haven't been asked to have, I never got five stickers.
Because you only had one mercantile license, and now you have five.
I had five mercantiles, as far as I understand. Anyway, matter of interpretation, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Jamie Rule on again. I was just concerned about what you said, fire safety. We do get it per unit, an inspection, do you know what I mean? We have to pay for each inspect, and, and.
Right, and that's, that's part of the mercantile license process, is the licensing with, and then making sure that the Fire Bureau has inspected or scheduled an inspection.
Right, okay, all right, well.
You and I are on the same page.
Yeah, but, okay, okay.
What were you, what were you going to say, I'm sorry?
No, it was just when you said, it was about what she said about her five, and I have two.
I said, "Safety is paramount."
Right.
And it is.
But they have to be inspected, they each have to be inspected separately.
And we need, we need homeowners and rental unit owners to come to us and schedule their inspections, and, and we'll, we send the reminders as a courtesy, but just like the IRS doesn't tell me I have to pay on April 15th, I just have to do it. You know, it's the same thing here.
Right, okay.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, thank you all very much, have a great evening, thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Time is 8:37.